Call the meeting to order for the regularly scheduled meeting of the Apex Town Council for March the 6th, 2018. I'd like to recognize Councilman Maurer for our invocation.
Thank you, please, Bill. Laura, thank you for today. Thank you for the opportunity to serve the citizens of Apex. I just pray that you be with us in this room and guide us in our decisions. And thank you for your son, Jesus. In his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me with the -- for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight. It's a drizzly night. It's a miserable kind of night, but it's a good night to be here and do the work of the people of Apex. I'd like to point out, Councilmember and Mayor Pro Tem Dozier regrets that she was not feeling well enough to be here tonight, so she is not able to be here. But we do have a quorum, and so we will proceed with the meeting as scheduled. There are no presentations, and we will now move into a time of consent agenda. As we do that, I will remind you two things before we get into consent. One is, these agendas are out on the podium outside, so if you missed one, feel free to jump up and go grab one. I don't mind if you get up in the middle. Feel free. The second thing is, if you intend to speak during public forum tonight, you need to make sure you have one of these yellow sheets and learn it before you get up here. And the second part of that is, if you intend to speak during public forum, or if you're a testimony witness in the public hearing that we have tonight, you will need to sign either of those. You need to sign the correct yellow sheet there so that we can call you by name when time comes, with the exception of quasi-judicial public hearing, because that happens in a little bit different process. But these are the guidelines for speaking in the public forum tonight. With that said, I'd like to move to the consent agenda item -- on the agenda. The consent agenda items are typically enacted by a single motion. They're deemed to be non-controversial, which means that, for the most part, we're all going to be in agreement. However, if one council member wishes to pull something from consent agenda for later discussion tonight, they certainly may do so. Before I call for the motion, I will ask the town manager -- I believe there was one consent agenda item that is being removed from tonight. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We'd like to remove Consent Number 15.
Okay. And just for the record, Consent Number 15 is being removed at the request of the applicant. Okay. Thank you very much. At that point, at this point, I'll ask council, are there any other consent items that need to be addressed, or is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda items in whole with number 15 removed. If there is no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, the consent agenda items are passed, and just like that, we now move to page three of your agenda. We now set the agenda for the rest of tonight, looking at the sheet in front of us, the planned agenda. I know of no changes to the planned agenda. Let me refer to the town manager or the town attorney to see if that's still true.
No changes, sir.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve the printed agenda as our agenda for tonight.
I'll make the motion. Who will approve?
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve the agenda discussion. Not hearing any, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, so we have set the agenda for tonight. We now move into the time of public forum. This is your time to speak to us. We listen while you talk. You have a three-minute timer. There's a green light, yellow light, red light. When you see the red light, I will be stopping you when we're out of time. But we would love to hear from you, and if you have signed up, you get to speak during the public forum. So let's see who signed up. Mr. Steve Swamp, come on down. And as usual, please state your name and address, and then the green light should come on.
Steve Swamp, 271 South Winds Run, which is the West Winds subdivision. Good evening. Tonight, I'm here to discuss the Pleasant Plains Park, for which you'll be voting on shortly. I, for one, am in favor of the park. However, I have some serious concerns. I think one of the reasons I'm in favor of the park is not so much the park itself. After all, we all enjoy the parks around Apex. A few weeks back, Tony Santoro, who is the spokesmodel for the Kirkwood subdivision, called me and informed me they had a sit-down with the park's planners so they could express their concerns. To my surprise, and I think Tony's as well, the planners actually took the input and approved the park designed for the surrounding neighbors. I should not be surprised by that. That is the way it should work. The feedback from the surrounding neighborhoods should be given a lot of consideration of the project. It is rare, though, as we typically see the developers getting concessions made in their favor. Because of this, I'm in favor of the park. However, the area that I have concern with is traffic. I live about a mile from this area, and you have heard me talk -- most of you have heard me talk about traffic problems that will be caused by the West Village subdivision. Traffic is getting worse even before construction starts. Many of us can tell you how much the traffic on Old US-1 has changed with the addition of the signal light at Timmy Olive Road. Because of the new light, the cars now come up Old US-1 in a more consistent manner, so much so that it has eliminated many of the gaps in traffic. It really makes it difficult to turn left from Kelly in the morning. I reviewed the park documents, and I noticed problems with the traffic study. First, it does not include Kelly Road. Not just the effects it will have on Kelly, but also the traffic that comes from it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
This is the subject of quasi-judicial hearing that's coming up in a few moments.
Ah, good point. Okay. So, hang on, Steve. So, just to be clear.
Set my timer.
Well, hang on, just, yeah, just hang on. Given, so if I can make sure we're clear, the quasi-judicial public hearing tonight, which can't be considered by anything that isn't presented as testimony, means that you probably should not be contributing testimony, but...
This is all my opinion.
It is his opinion, but it is the subject of quasi-judicial hearing.
Yes.
Your decision for that quasi-judicial hearing needs to be based on the material competent, relevant substantial evidence presented to you during the hearing, and not opinionally testimony during public forum.
Okay.
If you can just make that clear.
Okay, all right. So I think, based on that, Mr. Swamp, we would be happy for you to continue, but we do have to advise all the council members that anything Mr. Swamp says cannot be used in our consideration and decision-making during the quasi-judicial public hearing.
You guys know me, I make this stuff up anyway, so it doesn't matter.
Okay.
I'll be done under three.
Okay, sure.
Said, "I reviewed the park documents, and I noticed problems with the traffic study. First, it does not include Kelly Road. Not just the effects this will have on Kelly, but also the traffic that comes from it. Kelly is a major collector street. In a traffic study conducted for West Village, the level of service that is presented by Kelly will be an E. That's near gridlock. None of this traffic is included in what Old US-1 will be like once the park is built. Secondly, the traffic study only takes into account Phase 1 of West Village. In Phase 1, the street from West Village that connects to the end of Pleasant Plains Road does not connect to Kelly. This won't happen until the commercial portion is developed. When it does, the impact of the traffic will be much greater on this intersection. And also, we know that the tech flex space adjacent to the park will add large truck traffic from Guy C Lee, and possibly an office building or hotel be there as well. This should be included. All this adds up to larger traffic headaches, but more importantly, it adds up to safety concerns. West Village is going to add nearly 400 homes to this area. There will be kids. There will be kids with bikes. Many of the families are going to want to walk over to the park. They will have to cross multiple lanes of extremely heavy traffic. After all, traffic is heaviest at rush hour, when kids are out of school and wanting to play. Not only that, they will have to cross the railroad tracks as well. All of this adds up to potential problems. Tonight, I'm here to ask for a new traffic study. It won't take long to conduct this and add in Kelly Road and updated traffic volumes. Once the traffic data is in, then we will know if more work is needed. Approving the park at this time would be short-sighted. Apex is taking the time to address the neighborhood concerns. Let's take a little more time and make sure we really know what we're in for. No one wants to look back after a serious accident and say, "If we had only known." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swamp. That concludes the public forum tonight, and just, I want to restate for the council that when the quasi-judicial public hearing is presented tonight, certainly anyone in the room who heard anything that was said by Mr. Swamp can take that into account when they present their testimony tonight, but anything that was stated by Mr. Swamp tonight shouldn't be used for the decision-making process during the quasi-judicial public hearing, because that's the nature of the type of hearing it is. Okay? Everybody cool? Any questions for the town attorney based on that? I just want to make sure everybody's clear on that. Okay. So now that we have concluded public forum, we now move into the time of public hearings. And as we set up for that, I will begin. The quasi-judicial public hearing tonight is something that we do as part of our role as in the legislative capacity. Major site plan hearings are considered to be quasi-judicial, which means the council acts like a court of law, similar to a multi-person judge. Now, the burden is upon the applicant for the major site plan to put on evidence to show that they meet the criteria found in the town's Unified Development Code. Anyone opposed to the application must put on an evidence of defense of similar kind showing that the criteria have not been made. The testimony must be given under oath, and all testimony and evidence provided to the council must be competent material and substantial. Pursuant to the North Carolina General Statute, competent evidence does not include opinion testimony of lay witnesses on certain matters. Hearsay evidence will not be admitted. The parties have the right to cross-examine witnesses and to present rebuttal evidence. The town council will apply the criteria contained in the UDO and make its decision based on the evidence and testimony presented at this hearing. And the town council will now take up the case of the major site plan for Pleasant Park located at 3400 Pleasant Plains Road. With that, I will now open the public hearing, and have anyone who is going to speak or may speak during the public hearing tonight needs to come up here to the town clerk. She will do the swearing-in. So if you are an attorney, or an applicant, or staff members, or expert witness that may speak, you need to come be sworn in now. And while they're coming up and assembling, I'll just ask the council members to make sure you've found your checklist in your pile of papers. All right, and if you have your checklist with the boxes on the side, please make sure you have that out during the entire public hearing, so that you can write down your questions through there, and then when we get to the end, we'll be able to quickly ask you if you have any questions. All right, this time, I'll ask, just for identification purposes only, who is the applicant in this quasi-judicial public hearing, please?
Brian Myers, Assistant Town Attorney, representing the applicant, town of Apex.
All right. Thank you, Brian Myers. Mr. Myers. And are there any opponents tonight? Is there someone putting on a case in opposition? Okay. That should make things go a little bit smoother here. So at this time, I'll ask each council member to describe if you've had any communications about this case, if you have any relational or financial conflict related to this case, and if you believe you can decide this case impartially and solely on the competent evidence presented at this hearing. I'll start and move to my left. So I have had no communication other than Mr. Swamp's testimony tonight, which I think we can all stipulate that all of us heard. I have no conflicts, financial or relational, otherwise, and if needed to, if I need to, I can make a decision that is unbiased.
I have no conflicts. I do have a question. As an employee and a member of the town council, does that affect our position, making a decision against or for the town of Apex? Is there an applicant in this?
No.
Okay. I have no conflict.
I mean, we're aware that the council has participated in various steps of the process in getting to this site plan, the charade and whatnot. So you can just take notice that you participated in those activities.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
I have had no communications. I have viewed the site, but I believe I can make an unbiased opinion.
All right. Thank you. All right, let's go to Councilman Jensen.
I have had no communications. I have no conflicts, and I believe I can do an unbiased decision.
All right.
I have had no communications, no conflicts, financial or otherwise. I think I can make a sound decision.
All right, very good. Thank you. Have any council members gone to view the site specifically knowing that we have this quasi-judicial public hearing coming in front of us? No. Okay.
Are you referring to driving past it on US-1, or...
I don't mean, "Have you ever seen it?" I mean, "Have you intentionally gone to view the site, knowing that we were going to be deciding this tonight?" And I have not, but I assume not unless you say otherwise.
I have not.
Okay. All right. Okay, at this time, I'll open up for opening statements and ask Mr. Myers to come forward and make opening statements on his, on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The proposal before the council tonight is the next step in the Pleasant Park project following approval of the park's bond. The town intends to put forth sufficient evidence and expert testimony to show that the site plan does meet the standards provided to the UDO required for approval of a major site plan, as well as is in accordance with the 2030 land use plan. Following the staff's report, we'll be calling Jason Bertencino with RAV, who worked directly on the site plan. We also have other expert witnesses that have been sworn in that will be called for rebuttal if needed. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Does staff have any opening statements at all that are separate from the applicant department?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. All right, this time, I'll ask for evidence. First, staff, does staff intend to present evidence tonight?
Yes, we do.
All right. And just as a reminder, since this is a quasi-judicial public hearing, we'll ask for not just your name, but also your credentials that identify you as an expert in order to present witness testimony. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. My name is Sarah Rayfield. I am the senior planner with the town of Apex. I am AIC certified, and I have been a planner for over 15 years. I'm going to present the staff report and presentation for the Pleasant Park major The project is located at 3400 Pleasant Plains Road. The applicant is Jason Bertencino with RAV. The owner is the town of Apex. The current zoning for the parcel, I apologize, is 92.19 acres. The current zoning is rural residential. We do have tech flex conditional zoning here to the north. To the south, a single-family residential, the neighborhoods of Kirkwood and Pleasant Plains Estates. To the east, also zoned rural residential, single-family residential and vacant. To the west, rural residential and planned unit development conditional zoning. This is the future West Village site. The 2030 land use map recommendation is medium-density residential. The site to be developed is currently vacant and wooded. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on August 17th, 2017. The neighborhood meeting report is attached in your staff report. Before you is the overall site layout plan. The applicant is proposing to develop a public park consisting of four baseball fields, six soccer fields, three tennis courts, one volleyball court, three pickleball courts, two basketball courts, sorry, pickleball and basketball here, a cross-country track, a splash pad and play area here. There are three picnic shelters.
Where do you have the picnic shelters? I'm sorry.
There is one here, here, and I believe the third is over in here.
Thank you.
Baseball field house, house in here, soccer field house. There are various trails, and also 18 bike racks throughout the site. We have also included a phasing plan showing here, proposed phasing development. All infrastructure will be in place first. Next is your utility plan. The major site plan will extend town water and sewer services. This site is located in the secondary watershed protection overlay district in Cape Fear River Basin. The proposed major site plan meets all requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance. RCA and preserve buffers will be protected during grading with tree protection sensing. Included in the next three slides are the architectural elevations for the new buildings, such as the baseball and soccer field houses, that are provided in the attachment. The design and materials will be consistent with those found in other town of Apex parks. Pole-mounted lighting is proposed within the parking lots. The poles within the parking areas are 30 feet in height. The color of the poles and lighting fixtures will be black. Included here is your overall RCA plan. There are 20, a little over 23 and a half acres of RCA proposed on this site, which represents over 25 percent of the site. The minimum required by the UDO is 25 percent. All buffers required by the UDO have been provided. They include a 10-foot Type B perimeter buffer, a 100-foot controlled access highway buffer along I-540, and a 20-foot Type A buffer along Kingsview Trail Road. The proposed major site plan consists of six parking areas distributed throughout the There are 888 parking spaces, including 21 handicapped spaces, and 18 bike racks provided for this project. The park provides amenities identified as immediate needs in the Parks and Recreation Greenways and Open Space Master Plan. The proposed major site plan is consistent with the Apex Transportation Plan. The plan proposes access to the development through separate ingress and egress points on Pleasant Plains Road. The ingress will provide a circular route through the entire park site with access to the parking areas. The ingress is designed with an option to loop back to the egress without circulating through the entire site. So here is the ingress. This is the up-close, I'm zoomed in, improvements along Kingsview Trail. So this here is the ingress. There is the option to keep going through the site. I'll take you back through the overall to show you I can loop around. If someone enters the park and decides they don't want to go through the entire park to get back out, there is the option here to exit and to come back out to a separate egress. There is also pedestrian relief provided here, should that need be. So again, just to show you on a zoomed out, the ingress and the ability to come all the way around, so the ability to get here to the various parking areas and loop back around, and either come here to exit or be able to exit here. And again, this was that detailed area previously, showing that if there needed to be an immediate exit upon entering to the site, that could be done here. That will be the only public ingress and egress, or public ingress here, rather. There is a connection over here on Pleasant Plains that will be for emergency vehicles only, so it's not an open access. It is closed, but available only for emergency response. There was a traffic impact analysis conducted earlier. The full recommendations are included in your packet. I will go over those briefly. The TIA performed for the major site plan considered the proposed site drive, as well as the following intersections, Old US Highway 1 and Pleasant Plains Road, Old US Highway 1 and Friendship Road. I will now go into the recommendations. Those at Old US Highway 1 and Pleasant Plains Roads, the TIA recommended the following improvements committed by the future West Village plan, and that is to widen the eastbound approach of Old US-1 to provide an exclusive right-turn lane with at least 150 feet of full storage and appropriate taper. Extend the westbound left-turn lane to provide at least 250 feet of full storage and appropriate taper. Widen the northbound approach of Pleasant Plains Roads to provide an exclusive left-turn lane with at least 200 feet of effective storage between Old US-1 and site egress, correcting for approximately 550 feet of railroad crossing. Consider a channelized right-turn taper to the northbound approach to facilitate quick egress during special events, and monitor for traffic signalization and install traffic signal with railroad preemption when warranted and approved by NC DOT in conjunction with CSX Railroad. Apex staff agrees with the recommendation, and also to let you know that all improvements will be coordinated with the development of West Village. And prior to the park opening, the railroad crossing improvements and the southbound left-turn lane on Old US-1 will be operational. Old US Highway 1 and Friendship Road, the TIA recommends the following roadway improvements at this intersection. Widen the westbound approach of Old US-1 to provide an exclusive left-turn lane with at least 150 feet of full storage and appropriate taper. And widen the northbound approach on Friendship Road to provide an exclusive left-turn lane with at least 100 feet of full storage and appropriate taper. Apex staff also agrees with this recommendation. Pleasant Plains Road and Site Egress, the TIA recommends the following roadway improvements. To construct a Site Egress driveway that will consist of two outbound lanes with an exclusive right-turn lane and an exclusive left-turn lane with at least 100 feet of storage length. The Site Egress will be the only non-emergency exit point from the development. Staff agrees with this recommendation. Pleasant Plains Road and Site Ingress, the TIA recommends to construct a Site Ingress driveway that will consist of one inbound lane. The TIA also recommends to widen southbound Pleasant Plains Road to provide an exclusive left-turn lane with at least 150, excuse me, with at least 100 feet of storage length and appropriate taper. The Site Ingress will be the only non-emergency entry point into the development. Additional considerations out of the TIA recommending internal site access configuration to be designed to promote uninterrupted traffic flow into the park and provide separation of park traffic from the neighborhood. Based on traffic simulations, no excessive delay, queuing, blocking, or spillback was observed in the internal traffic circulation network. Apex staff agrees with these recommendations. And lastly, the major site plan is in compliance with the standards provided in the UDO. That concludes my presentation.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Rayfield. Before you sit down, let me just ask, are Russell and Shannon here on behalf of staff as opposed to the applicant for tonight? Okay.
They are members of the technical review committee and are here to testify and answer any questions you may have from a regulatory standpoint.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you. Okay, so let me ask at this time if council has any cross-examination questions for Ms. Rayfield's presentation. Let me ask council first.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. But thanks for that answer. Now I know where you're going with it. Remind me to play cards with you later, so you go out of turn. I'm messing with you, Brian. Sorry. Let me ask council, are there any questions for Ms. Rayfield? I have a couple, if you don't mind. So first of all, on the lighting plan, can you state the height of the tallest light pole?
The poles themselves are 30 feet.
Okay. So the light presumably would be at 30 feet or lower. Okay. What is the, what is the plan for an eventual second exit? My understanding is that there is a, on the northwest side, there is a street that has a stub, so I want, I want to hear if you have, if there is indeed a stub that could theoretically be used for a second exit at some point in the future.
I believe I may need to defer in that.
Ms. Cox is here to talk about the Advanced Apex Plan.
Okay. Is that going to be part of the testimony later, or is it now...
It would be an answer to your question.
Okay.
We weren't going to testify to that unless you asked the question.
Okay. I would like to know the answer. So if you don't mind, please come up and identify yourself, and I'll repeat the question if you need me to.
You don't need to repeat the question. My name is Shannon Cox. I'm the senior transportation planner with the town. So we, we have included in our considerations for Advanced Apex, which you know is our ongoing effort to update the comprehensive transportation plan. Our recommendations will look at providing alternative secondary access points in this area. Our current transportation plan shows an extension of Pleasant Plains Road with a grade separation of US-1. We may also look at additional access from Pleasant Plains Road to Friendship Road. So those are the possibilities that we're looking at. And the park... And the park will be taken into consideration with priorities for those access points.
And so if you don't mind with the mouse, can you show me where those possible second or other alternatives are?
Well, so Pleasant Plains Road extends beyond what you're seeing on the map here. So that would be, you know, further to the south. The exact location of additional access between Pleasant Plains Road and Friendship Road has not yet been identified. One possibility is that it could come in here, but that is not set in stone.
Okay, and is there a possibility to the north, to the Tech Flex area? Is that still open? In other words, we're not, we're not precluding that from being a possible alternate way off the premises? Or is that going to be bound by the?
We have the railroad in this location.
Yeah.
So what we would most likely recommend is additional access that would connect to existing railroad crossings. So that's why it would be most likely between Pleasant Plains Road and Friendship Road, which is this direction and has it.
Okay, so if, if this crossing were blocked, then an alternate egress would be further to the south and/or west before crossing the tracks?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Oh, did you have a?
I wanted to carry on from what you said.
On the same topic?
On the same topic.
Okay.
It's just the access down to, towards Friendship. I think we'd probably have to go all the way to Friendship, would we not? I don't know how we could get across CSX.
So.
Anything that's private or?
Right, so the, our initial analysis of potential access points and roads included a connection from Friendship to Pleasant Plains. We don't have other alternatives that we've looked at at this point, mostly because of trying to use the existing railroad crossings.
And is there, is there a current possibility of Richardson Road meeting current US 1? Not the old US 1, but existing US 1 in the future? Is that, is that a possibility?
The transportation plan shows an extension of Richardson Road all the way to US 1.
Okay. Okay, I'd like to move on to my next question.
I apologize, I.
No, just all right. No, you're okay. I don't mind staying on topic. Are there any, any existing plans at all for this crossing? I think you said grade separation. Did you say grade separation?
So I said grade separation of Pleasant Plains Road and US 1.
Oh, US 1, okay.
So in toward Holly Springs.
Okay, so then this question is not related to that. Is there, do we have any plans at all for this intersection to be planned and implemented when widened as a quiet zone?
I am not aware of any plans for that.
It wasn't, it wasn't in this plan, right? Yes, okay.
Russell Dalton, Senior Transportation Engineer. As far as the quiet zone goes, that's a totally separate application process. My understanding, and our consultant can probably speak to that better, as far as the improvements that are going in here, my understanding is that technology with the lights and the gates would be eligible to be part of a quiet zone application, but again, that's a whole separate process where you have to look at the risk index in comparison to the database. And it's also, if it's near other crossings that don't have the correct equipment in, you would probably have to upgrade those crossings as well, and it starts to get pretty expensive, but it's something we can look at.
And it's not in this presentation, correct?
Correct.
Okay, it's not included in this project?
Correct. I mean, this, this would, the improvements that are planned for this crossing could help move you toward a quiet zone in the future, but it's not guaranteeing it by itself.
Okay, all right, thank you. The last question I have, and this may be more back for you, Ms. Rayfield. On the south part of the property there, there's sort of this space, and I'm unable to determine what we think that is. Is that a retention pond, or is that just RCA space, trees preserved? Yes, the sort of, that sort of general area on the south right there, middle of the south.
The cross-country track that'll come through here? That's what the dashed line represents?
Is that a big open field?
Oh, that's just open field?
Okay.
Okay, thanks. That's what I was looking for, open field. Yeah, no, that's, but let me ask, Ms. Rayfield, can you confirm that's an open field? As this is your expert testimony?
Yes, I believe, yes.
I'll wait, I'll wait and make sure you're sure.
No, I just was reading the sign print.
No, that's fine.
Yes, but that's what that is, so that's.
It's an open field. Okay, all right, thank you.
Are you finished?
Yes.
Okay, because I would like to, just along that southern boundary, is that where you said it was going to be a 10-foot type B buffer? Or is that going to be an A buffer? I lost track of the different positions of the buffers when you were going through The reason I'm asking is that, to me, an A buffer along that line would be important to separate the park a bit from the subdivision to the south.
That, I believe that that is the 10-foot type B. Unfortunately, I don't think I can actually zoom in any further, but best of my recollection, that's the 10-foot type B.
Seems to me we'd want to go to an A. Okay. I think that that consideration should be made.
All right, so we'll come back to that thought, but you got your answer, I think, right? Okay. All right, thank you, Ms. Rayfield. And did you have a question? Sorry?
Yeah, I do. Pedestrian crossing over to Old US 1, over Old US 1 to the future West Village development over there with the, what's the plans for pedestrian crossings?
As far as the details, I would defer to engineering and traffic or the applicant on what that would be.
All right, so we'll hold that for the.
All right, and one more question.
Sure.
And you might need to defer this as well. I don't, I don't know, but 30-foot light poles, including on the baseball field and soccer field?
No, no, it's the, the fields that are not lit, the basketball and the pickle courts. These over here, these courts over here will not have lighting.
So 30-foot parking lot lights and then different sized lights on the baseball fields or the fields that have lights on them?
And the applicant can speak more to where those, where those lights are. I think into your questions, I have, I think they might go. I think the applicant may be better to answer those.
All right, we'll hold that one for the.
Okay.
Yes. When it says monitor for traffic signalization of the Pleasant Plains and Old US 1, can you explain a little more what that means and what that process would be like?
I believe that that would be something I need to defer to traffic engineering to speak as the expert on that.
Engineering? All right, so we'll get Russell to answer that one. And do you need the repeated question?
No, I've got it. Typically, what we would do is, is again, monitoring is just mainly observing. We would look at the delays that are out there. When you start to see a queue of cars building, you can, you can actually calculate delay enough to decide when you might want to go out there and do a signal warrant study. And we could actually do, you have to do like a 12-hour or 16-hour count to determine if the signal's warranted. So it won't be right away. Obviously, the park by itself, I don't think would warrant the signal. I think you're probably going to have to have West Village, the substantial development on this other side of the road to kind of help promote that signal. It was also included in their development plan.
All right, thank you, Russell.
I would like to ask one more question regarding the retention ponds. When I read it, it said they would meet the UDO. Are we trying to just meet the UDO, or are we going to exceed the UDO? UDO is a 10-year storm. I was hoping we would be doing something better than that, being as we are kind of leading that.
I will defer to the applicant to answer that question for you.
All right. The applicant's coming. All right, ready? Can we get the applicant? First of all, let me ask to follow the process. Mr. Myers, do you have any cross-examination questions for, of staff and their testimony?
I do not.
All right, thank you. Now, that sounds like an odd question because I'm about to bring you up here to present testimony, but that is the way it works. So at this time, the applicant will present evidence, and then we will also have the opportunity to cross-examine the applicant and their evidence. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Before calling our first witness, I would like to offer the staff's report and presentation into evidence, just for the record, and also ask that the council take judicial notice of the standards of the UDO as well as the land use plan.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Town's first witness is Jason Bertencino. Please state your name, occupation, and qualifications.
My name is Jason Bertencino. I am a engineer with Withers-Ravenel Engineering and Land Planning Firm here in Cary, North Carolina. It's always difficult this time of year with qualifications because I'm a Virginia Tech alum here at the ACC Tournament time, but I have been doing this for over 20 years, focusing primarily on site development, planning, and traffic and stormwater studies.
We'd like to offer Mr. Bertencino as an expert.
Thank you, Mr. Myers.
And he's just going to present his review of the site. Thank you.
Okay, so being the second guy up and doing, and being this little bit different quasi-judicial, one of the things I had to do is adapt a little bit, maybe try to answer some of the questions that the council spoke to, as well as maybe clarify a couple of points from the staff report and go there. Would like to start and say, obviously, this is a project that's been going on for some time. For us, it's a 2014 job number, so we've, working on going on our fourth year. I know many members of the town, definitely Mr. Brown, have been involved a lot longer than that, so certainly been a lot going into this process. A couple of clarifications and one maybe to even address the previous public hearing relative to the traffic studies and how they're presented. We have other experts if we get into the weeds of some of the details of it, but I was definitely involved in the process all the way through. The scoping for those studies, the parameters that were set were involved from NC DOT, CSX Rail, obviously town staff, a number of those different things, and what we looked at. I can't go into how those presumptions were made, but we did look at both onsite and off-site intersections as we went into that, as well as options for other connection points, things of that nature. Relative to stormwater, as that was a question that was sort of alluded to just a minute ago, we discharge directly into a floodplain. We are proposing to meet the town ordinance to the extent that we also have the ability. We intend on doing additional stormwater volume control underneath the artificial turf fields. There's a unique opportunity to do that in there. The specifics of that, we're not ready to commit to a specific storm event. However, we are discharging directly into a floodplain, so additional stormwater controls, especially in those small to mid-size events, don't really have any effect on the immediate areas as they're already protected by your floodplain ordinances. A very important thing to note, whether it be related to traffic, whether it be the development of the project, it is phased, for those of you that are familiar with the bond. And we do have a number of phases. The first phase, as it stands today, is contemplated to have four of the multipurpose fields, the splash pad, most of the recreation area, roughly half of the parking spaces, in addition to all of the roadway improvements, the entrance improvements, the roadway improvements at Pleasant Plains Road and Old US 1. There are some off-site road improvements further down the road at Friendship Road. That would be coming along with Phase 2. We've been very committed to the life of this project, even though it doesn't necessarily get kids on fields, but to make the necessary improvements as much as we could upfront in the process to make sure we're addressing those concerns as much as we possibly can. One other point of clarification was relative to the lights. The ball field lights themselves are actually closer between 60 and 80 feet, depending on the type of light and where it is on the field. Sarah was correct in stating only the soccer multipurpose fields and the baseball fields will be lighted. Excuse me, the small tennis courts in the back adjacent to the highway will as well. The pickleball courts and the basketball courts along Pleasant Plains Road will not. Speaking to the open field question, that was one of the reasons why that is an open field. We did look at some ball fields in some of the early iterations. It was very clear in working with the neighbors, anything we could do to minimize lighting, pull it as far away from the neighbors. That's why that is not a lighted facility, that open field. It is a play field. Relative to the type A versus type B buffer, it is proposed to be a type B buffer. That field sits down several feet, probably 12 to 15 feet below the surrounding areas. And again, it's an open field, followed by a stream buffer, followed by any active areas within the park. There will also be a fence along that southern property line to keep any ne'er-do-well children that might be wandering from the open play field off of the neighbor's property. So we are committing to that additional element in that buffer area as well. Finally, as far as the presentation itself, before we get into some of the specific checklists, I'm concluding saying I have been doing this for over 20 years. I have not been a part of a more rigorous review process, I don't think, in any town than this one. We've literally had dozens of meetings with state and federal agencies, CSX, police, fire, town staff. There's been a, we started it with a design charrette across the way in the community center where I think there's close to 200 folks from town has been involved. There's been input from this board, there's been input from the Parks and Rec Advisory Commission. All of that's warranted. I mean, obviously, this is a large-scale project. It's very important to the town. This process is rigorous as it may be. I compliment everyone that's been involved. The project that is here before you today, meeting with the neighbors, everything else, everyone has had input. There's not an aspect of this project that we did on our own. There's, there's something that came from everyone, to include how we treated the entrance, and I'm very appreciative of all the groups that provided input to get us to the point where we are today.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bertencino. Before you leave, I told you I'd pronounce your name right, and I didn't. Mr. Bertencino, before you leave, let me see if the council has any cross-examination questions for you. Appreciate you trying to answer some of the questions you heard brought up earlier tonight. So let me open it up first. I'll turn to Councilman Jensen.
I still do have questions about the B buffer along the southern boundary in terms of if it was an A buffer, we have moral pick, and to me, it would help protect the subdivision to the south from, you said, 65-foot lights on the ball fields if we were able to get a full-height A buffer. And if it's an open field, I know we go, we go B buffers when we have to try to augment what's there, but if it's an open field, I just think that the southern boundary, you might consider, or ask staff and the applicant to consider a A-type buffer.
Is there any existing vegetation along Pleasant Plains there at the south border?
Yeah, I mean, so the entire site is wooded in some form or fashions. Much of it has been cut over not too awful long ago. Much of it remains wooded, you know, from that standpoint. That particular area, as Mr. Jensen suggests, we talked about, I mean, there is stopping short 20 to 30 feet of the property line with, as far as grading goes. We're not going to go right up to the property line with grading. To whatever extent that we can leave vegetation there, we certainly will. When you're creating buffers in those areas, you're generally augmenting them so existing vegetation can meet those standards if you can. But, you know, we will be clearing it to create that open play area, the sort of non-program space that would allow, you know, again, different folks and groups within the town to have active areas that aren't specifically programmed for athletics or things of that nature, as well as the start and finish line for the cross-country anticipation there. Certainly, you know, we can talk in as far as a specific buffer addition and see there. We are adding the fence, like I said, to that area, which has got some level of opacity as well.
The fence itself, is that intended to be opaque?
Is not intended to be opaque, no. It is not intended to be opaque, no.
It's simply a security fence?
That's correct.
Okay. Did you have any other questions, Mr. Meyer?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, so you heard an answer to one of, or both of yours? Okay, all right. Any other cross-examination questions?
I just wanted to finish up, I guess, on, on that question, uh, 'cause I, we're moving up to, within thirty feet, we're not going to go with tighter than that, but we're talking about an A buffer of ten feet, or a B buffer of ten feet. I understand the B buffer and the reason, if there is already vegetation there, that makes sense, uh, providing it has the opportunity to get to proper height. But we're just talking an A, a ten-foot wide buffer right now, instead of a thirty-foot, you said, the way I understood, you said you wouldn't get closer to the property line of thirty feet with the play yard.
Right, so this is, this is obviously a unique project in the sense that it's a park. Um, and, and even when we talk about things like RCA, um, versus, you know, if it was a subdivision, or if it was a factory, or with a lot of parking areas and, and things like that, so we're buffering open spaces, and, and we're buffering, in some cases, woods, uh, and things like that. So, you know, we had to identify to meet code, specific buffering requirements along the thing. The reality is, in virtually every case along this property, the buffering is going to be greater than that, just because it's a natural area. Um, you know, now, again, if you're asking for us to, to talk about making a commitment to a, a specific greater buffer, we can talk amongst ourselves to do that, but again, we're, we're sort of buffering open spaces and, and open areas and things, and not a parking lot or a building or things of that nature. So it's a little bit of a unique mindset than a normal development project.
I guess you'd have to almost be on-site to, for me to understand what we're talking about, but I, I know there's a wetland just to the north of where we're talking about, and that would probably have large trees, I assume. I'm just trying to make sure that the, that the properties to the south are well buffered. Yeah, and I understand a lot of natural stuff there, but to ensure that it is, if we knock down that field all the way to the ten feet, which was indicated, but now you're saying thirty feet, and I'm happy with that.
So we've committed a buffer, again, our grading plan ends up being slightly less than that. We're not grading right up to that edge. Um, we're, we're coming very close to it, but obviously, again, we're meeting, on the site plan, the buffer, the ordinance requirements, um, but the grading plan's slightly less than that. We're not pushing the envelope. Again, it's a cut slope, we're cutting down into the field. The field will be much lower. What you don't, also don't want to do is undermine any existing vegetation in that required ten feet. So if you stay off of it a little bit, you're also protecting the existing vegetation to as much as you can.
I don't, I don't mean to cut you off, but-
No, I, I'll go by faith.
Right, so at this point, at this point, we're, so we're cross-examining his presentation, which means asking questions on his testimony. So I just want to make sure, does anybody else have any questions on his testimony? You do?
Yes, I, um, Wes had asked a question earlier that, that I did not hear the answer to about pedestrian crossing.
Great question. I actually wrote it down on my paper as I was trying to keep up, and I didn't address it. Uh, yes, we have committed to, as a part of this, to make a pedestrian crossing at Pleasant Plains Road with the rail crossing improvements, um, in, in performance with normal standards. It's probably something that's going to be, uh, very similar to what's been done at, at Laura Duncan or here in town, um, but it will meet rail and NC DOT standards. But that crossing will be committed with the first phase of the project, that pedestrian crossing.
Okay, so are we talking multi-use path in front there, or are we talking sidewalk?
Uh, we committed to, eh, that's a very good question. We are committed, we've committed to a sidewalk, or we can certainly look to a multi-use path, I believe. There, there may be some requirements for that, actually.
Okay. All right, thank you, Wes. Good.
Are you suggesting, look at a multi-use path? Is that what you're suggesting?
I'm very highly suggesting that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, that's basically what we have at Laura Duncan, is a multi-use path headed up that way. Um, there is some sidewalk, but-
I don't know the appropriateness of that in a quasi-judicial, but for the purposes of clarification, I don't have a problem with that being a requirement if it's not already a requirement, from, from that standpoint. It's not an issue for us.
All right, okay, I appreciate you mentioning that. So what we'll do is make a note of that, and, um, a little bit later on, we can ask either Mr. Myers or Mr. Brown to see if they want to comment on that.
And the only caveat to that that I would add is, obviously, it's going to be governed by the rail, uh, by CSX, and so-
Sure.
If they were to prevent that. But from representing the town, the Parks and Recreation Department, we have no issue with that.
I think we have that caveat written in granite somewhere.
Okay. Well, I don't want to, you know, same thing, we ought to come back and do another quasi-judicial to un-remove that part of the intersection as a way.
All right, um, any other questions for Mr. Bertencino?
One follow-up with that. Um, so basically, we're looking at a light eventually here as well. Um, the pedestrian crossing at the light, are we looking at, you know, electronic signals there?
Yeah, so, you know, again, we're at the master site plan stage, construction drawings. There's a lot to do there, uh, is the next phase of this. Um, in all of our meetings with CSX and NC DOT, the commitment has been that we will set up the rail signals so that they can be tied to the traffic signals, and be, all the preemptions and things of that nature will all be accommodated for, once the warrants are met, to, to provide all that signalization, yes.
Are there sidewalks along the interior loop road?
There are various forms of sidewalks everywhere throughout the project. Uh, there is, um, so-
Or if I could modify the question, are there safe places to walk that aren't in the street area?
Or the cross-country?
So they don't have people, right, so that you don't have people running or walking in this, in the driving area of asphalt?
Yeah, I'll simplify that by saying yes. On, on, throughout the project, there are sidewalks, accessible sidewalks, to every part of the project, connecting every part of the project, yes.
What is the buffer, Bert, whether basketball courts, pickleball courts, they actually come down Pleasant Plains?
Uh, we actually are proposing a thirty-foot buffer in that particular location along Pleasant Plains Road, on the site plan.
Is that a B or A? What was that?
It is a thirty-foot A along Pleasant Plains Road.
All right, any other cross-examination questions for Mr. Bertencino? All right, thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Myers, do you have any other witnesses to call?
No, Mr. Mayor, we'd like to reserve the right to call rebuttal witnesses if needed, but no further witnesses at this time.
All right, very good. And, uh, that concludes the applicant's presentation of evidence. There is no opposition, so there's no presentation of opposition evidence. Uh, at this time, I'd like to see if staff have any non-repetitive rebuttal evidence to present?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. Um, does the applicant have any non-repetitive rebuttal evidence?
Nothing further.
All right, thank you. Uh, does staff have any closing arguments?
No, we do not.
All right, how about the applicant?
Just very briefly, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the site plan has been proposed. Mr. Bertencino and Ms. Rayfield have both testified that the site plan does meet the provisions of the UDO. Uh, it's a town's position that sufficient substantial competent material evidence has been presented to warrant approval of the site plan, and, uh, we respect the request for approval at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Myers. All right, that, that concludes the, um, presentation of the evidence and all of the closing arguments. I'd like to ask council to locate their checklist, which hopefully is right in front of them, and they've made certain notes on there. So I'll ask council if you have any questions about any of the checklist items on here. Um, this is the time to make your final comment or question based on the site plan checklist in front of you.
I would like to make a general comment. Mayor, I realize the, um, the site plan is meeting the UDO requirements. I do have concern as this, um, comes to full vision here at this park, uh, traffic in and out, and safety of pedestrians as West Village across the street, um, becomes, you know, gets full of their houses and kids and families. Um, I would love to see, at some point, the town, uh, consider, with, with what's going on here, separating pedestrians from traffic across Old One. Um, you know, and, and I'd love to see another way out, um, of the park, uh, you know, with, without confiscating private property, uh, which is a big concern of mine, um, but, I mean, I realize this meets the UDO, but just as a comment.
Okay, and I think staff have heard our comments tonight, so I know as we go forward in other projects, they'll be keeping these things in mind. Um, all right, thank you for that. Any other comments on the checklist or further? All right, with that, I'll close the public hearing and ask the council, uh, to consider their, their comments and checklists, and at this time, I'll ask if there is a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the, um, public hearing item tonight. Any discussion on the motion to approve? All right, not hearing any, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and I appreciate, uh, you guys coming out tonight and entertaining our questions and staff as well. Um, and I'll just restate, you heard some questions, staff, and comments and concerns for the future, and I'll just ask that you keep those in mind for traffic and safety and pedestrian-friendly and buffers and some of those things, so as we move forward with other projects and implementation, uh, we take those things into consideration. All right, thank you. Uh, with that, uh, that closes out public hearing number one, which actually is the last thing on our agenda, so, um, if there's no further comment from anybody on the council, then we will stand adjourned. Thank you very much.